Go ahead and start your.
That's what Sean said.
I'm just using that to get everybody's attention. We'll go ahead and start the Wilmer City Council Work Session for Monday, October 2nd. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to make a comment to the council? Seeing and hearing none. We have eight items on our agenda and will attempt to get through those, although we do not want to rush any of the processes, we want to have thorough discussion on each of them. So, the first thing is the phased retirement option agreement with PRA. And Bridgette Buckingham, our HR Director, will be addressing this issue. Bridgette?
This is an option offered by PRA. It's a succession planning option for the city to implement and it requires council approval to be filed with PRA. It's something that we can choose to use or not to choose, even if we pass it as an option. We don't have to use it, but it's a tool to have in place should we want to use it. We have several staff members that we anticipate will be retiring in the next five years. The pro-agreement will allow the transition into retirement for the employee and provide the city with a workforce planning tool that can help transfer knowledge from the longtime employee to the new employee. In addition, until the new employee is hired, the retired employee, retiring employee can work in the position under this agreement but only for up to 1,044 hours. This allows the city to continue operations without interruption or strain on the rest of the staff where we may need to distribute the workload to. The city does not have to use it for every position that a retiring employee leaves. However, it does provide the option to maintain coverage of a position until it's filled and/or assist in training of a new employee into the position. It is also at the discretion of the city to determine the hours of work for the retiree and in deciding the length of the agreement. It's staff's recommendation that council approve this option in order to implement a succession plan. We do not see any issues with this. There's no financial impact with PRA. The employer is not required to make any further contributions. The alternatives are to not approve it if you choose not to do.
Okay, for discussion, council, is there anything that you'd like to talk about this? I know this would normally probably come up under a labor-type conversation, but council, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has staff reviewed this and they're all okay with it, the five that you've talked about in here?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, Bridgette, what, did I miss it? What positions are we going to be losing over the next five years and who would be, who would we be targeting or expecting to use this program for?
Well, nothing is said for sure, you know, because they are just talking, but it looks like our Planning and Development Director, our Building Official, possibly our Building Inspector, our City Engineer, and one other person that doesn't choose to be named right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, after hearing and we can, you know, we all know that we have a good, solid, dedicated staff that's put in a lot of years working for the city, but I would hate to find ourselves in a spot like we have with some other positions, whereas all of a sudden the position becomes vacant and for one reason or another that position remains vacant for a certain amount of time. And the thought of losing certain key individuals kind of, and it seems like it might be kind of in one specific department or area, and I, it probably just happenedstance that it works out that way, but it is a scary thought to lose a number of well-experienced individuals and a wealth of knowledge. This seems to me, from what I've read here and then also a little bit of the reading that I've done online about it, seems like a decent way to create a mitigation plan so that you can transfer some of that knowledge to maybe new staff members that may be coming into those positions, whether they be coming up through the ranks or whether they be new individuals from outside the community. So, I think it seems like a good viable option and a good way for the city to protect itself moving forward.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The concern I have is that when you put things like this in place, it becomes a crutch and we don't necessarily move forward as quickly as we would otherwise. And so, if the council feels that this is a good option, I would like to stress that we would not want it to become the normal course of business, but rather an exception if we are not able to have the position filled in a timely fashion. But I would want us to be very aggressive in filling our positions and trying to even have some time that's overlapping in which we can have that expertise transferred and shared. I wouldn't want this to be considered a supplement to retirement as someone comes in and does some, you know, consulting work and have that as a long-term kind of strategy. So, I would, I just caution us that we make sure that we use it for the intent that it's, that I assume we have, and that would be a short-term bridge if that was a last resort.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I'm concerned that we're using this or talking about using it versus talking about succession planning. I guess I was curious why it was on tonight's agenda and why we weren't addressing this at a labor meeting as we had talked about instead of at a work session. I do also share, Councilmember Schwantes', that it's there, let's just use it kind of attitude with that, and I'm wondering why it's such a sense of urgency that we would want to say we have to move it to the council agenda tonight. I think it's something to be thought about. I don't know that I necessarily see negatives, but I think there's also a concern that I would have is that when someone chooses to retire, they should be allowed to retire and it should be our job to make sure we have a plan in place to replace that person and for that person, just as we experienced with our administrator who wanted to start on his own, to allow that to happen versus some of that. I appreciate the knowledge, I appreciate the information. I'm not quite there that this is such a necessity that we have to do, and I'm wondering also if we can adopt this whenever, if we had a situation come up, couldn't we adopt it then?
It does take six months before a retiree retires. It takes approval six months ahead of time.
Okay, and I know there was a situation where someone, we had talked about this before and there isn't, so this removes the PRA timeframe of them returning to work?
What it does is it allows P, us to have that person on staff without paying out the PRA anymore, and yet the person can take a percentage of the PRA, but not the whole thing, because that person would still be working.
Staff also has a request to move this forward to council for tonight. I've heard one person speak that we should hold it and think about it a bit more. I'm not sure that this falls into the emergent category unless there's something you know that we don't know, but I think.
Mayor, I would just say on that, as she stated, it takes six months for this policy to go into effect, and we do have several members that are within that six-month window. So, if we're going to initiate it in 2018, I would recommend that we do it, you know, this month, I guess is what I'm saying.
Is there an urgency of council to move this forward tonight? I'm not seeing that urgency. Okay. Next, we have Civic Center Refrigeration System Professional Design Services. I know we don't have Sean here, who is, Steve, are you prepared to address this? Mr. Brizendine, our Community Ed and Rec Director.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council. Before you is a council agenda report related to refrigeration design services from Stevens As you all know, the Civic Center Refrigeration System is a dated system that's using an R-22 system that is going to become obsolete in the near future. We've had some issues with the refrigeration system the last couple of years, and it seems to be that the council has put this as a priority to move forward. What you see before you is a recommendation to begin the design services utilizing Stevens Engineering to design the refrigeration system that we would need in the future. If I'm struggling a little bit, it's because I am, because my computer is not plugging up, but bottom line is, we've received a request or an information report from Stevens Engineering that would outline the work they would do to plan and design the refrigeration system, including the pricing and overseeing of the bidding process. Stevens Engineering is very informed of the Civic Center facility currently. Their latest work with us was with the HVAC system. They designed the majority of ice rink facilities in not only the state of Minnesota, but the upper Midwest and arguably nationally. They're a well-thought-of organization. Their price tag for the design services of the Civic Center Ice Refrigeration Project would be $197,300. We've got a little bit of urgency in why you're seeing it requested, not only at the work session discussed this evening, but also to move to the council, is the design and construction of a new plant is a nine-to-12-month process. If we want to reach the, or complete the system in time for the 2018-19 ice season, we've got a little bit of urgency on getting it after the design process of it. So, staff's recommendation is to enter into an agreement with Stevens Engineering for designing construction documents to replace the two ice plants into one system at the Civic Center facility, and it would be the intent to reimburse the expense that we're looking at in the 2017 system, season, budget year with resources that would be budgeted in the 2018 fiscal year. The game plan would be is to get Stevens Engineering started on the project. They believe that if we get going in early to mid-October, that they'll complete the design documents in the January timeframe, which would allow for a two-to-three-month bidding process to take place, get construction folks in place in the mid-spring timeframe, and begin the construction as the ice comes off the sea, for the season at the end of So, bottom line is, we're looking to get design services with Stevens Engineering started for the replacement of the refrigeration system. I'd stand for questions. Actually, I'll sit here.
I just have a couple of questions, and I apologize that I didn't really have an opportunity to vet this thoroughly this afternoon. When this was presented by myself to the council at the work session, I had $2.8 million in the budget, and when I prepared, was preparing my budget, there was $2.8 million in the budget. And then I was encouraged to drop that amount to 2.4. And so, can someone walk me through that process of why six weeks ago it was 2.4 million and why it's 600,000 more today, just six weeks after I had presented everything at the retreat, that it was 2.8 million? And then I was told, no, drop it down to 2.4, and why we went back up now to higher even in the 2.8 that I had placed in the mayor's budget?
The short answer is that it's, when you're funding that, it's up to $3 million. And so, the finance director and myself talked about this, and would it exceed $3 million? No. Did it have contingency funds in that budget number? No. Was the engineering calculated in that amount? No. And so, that's why I said, let's go up to, not to exceed, is the key word there, of $3 million. And so, that's the short version of how that happened.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. Mr. Brizendine, did we not have them do some engineering a few years ago? I know there was concern about us being in a crisis mode and if the plant would break down, that we wouldn't be prepared to do that. Did they not do some initial engineering on this years ago?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, Councilman, Councilmember Nelson, they've looked at our system, they're well-aware of our system, but they have not begun engineering services to design a new system at this time.
Okay.
They gave us proposals for when this was going to take place a couple of years ago and have recently updated it to include what we're asking for this evening.
Second question, I know that we don't have to go out to do bids on this, but I know there are multiple companies that do this, correctly, if I'm correct? I know you mentioned that before, so would you just speak to how, you know, have we checked to see on the engineering costs with other companies, or is this strictly someone that we've worked with that we want to stay with, working with?
We did not seek quotes from other businesses to do this work for us. You stated their familiarity with us, that's part of the equation, but also the number of arenas that they do versus their competition. It's, they're getting 80-plus percent of the market, so they seem to be the expert of choice for most communities in Minnesota, the upper Midwest, and most recently even nationally.
Councilmember Christensen, did you wish to?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought I seen your hand, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
I thought Mr. Mesky was going to raise his hand.
He did, but you have seniority, so I'm going with you first. How do you like that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, there are many companies that install this equipment also. That engineering price seems awful, awful high. I don't think it's rocket science, the new process they use to freeze the water, turn it into ice. Wouldn't it be better to ask for quotes from these companies that actually install it? I mean, they have to have design people on their team too. I mean, I do that with trust companies, roofs, floors, and get an engineer, they have their own engineering staff, and I have to believe that some of these companies have their own engineering staff also. That's my question, I mean, is it, and I agree with Councilmember Nelson, that maybe we should look at a couple others, just because they're getting 80% of the bids. Maybe we've got more people out there pounding on doors too. But I have to, I just am astounded by that number, $107,000 to engineer the, how to design and install that equipment. I gotta believe that companies out there, they're selling it, have their own design staff also in engineering. Am I wrong, or?
Councilmember Christensen, I can't speak to that. I don't have the expertise of what this firm will do versus whether the people that they end up working with on the installation of the work they do. But in the little bit of conversation I've had with my peers, I think Sean has done a lot, a little bit more research and Rob Baumgarn as well, but they seem to be the industry leader, and their familiarity with the facility already, I think, in our opinion, but we didn't, you know, we didn't set it out for quotes to get any others to figure out whether or not there's any impact or not, but we just assumed that their familiarity with us would help us from a pricing perspective as well. So, when you think of a $2.4 million project that will be out there, the less than 10% for the design and construction documents for that, at least from Sean's perspective from an engineering standpoint, seemed to be a competitive bid for us.
I realize that 10 to 15% is typical for engineering for a lot of design work, but I understand that this is going to be one system for both ranks, correct?
That's what's the proposal, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
Thank you. I don't know enough about the, about engineering costs for making ice rinks either. I'm not opposed to getting other quotes for that, however, if that's what we wish to do. My concern is more of, we haven't approved a budget that talks about putting the ice in yet, and putting the plans before that makes me very nervous. So, I understand the timeframe. I'm wondering, when you do a contract with an engineering company, is there a way to phase in costs, meaning that initial pieces could be coming in that don't have the whole price tag on it? Because we really don't have the budget approved to pay for that yet, and if, for some reason, something goes in a different direction, I want to make sure that we don't have too many, you know, resources going down the project at this point. I don't know how those things are structured, but is there a way to structure that contract so we may don't have so much outlay up front?
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Mes, yeah, what's your name? Mesky?
I'm the junior guy, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. We did have that conversation with the firm, and we asked them, all right, we've got a couple of months left of 2017 and don't have the resources in this year's budget, what are the options for us to spread the cost out, knowing that they do have some front-end stuff that is going to cost them money, and typically there is cash flow that they would be concerned about. And they, at that point, we didn't get anything in writing, but at that point, they had mentioned that they'd be willing to work with us. They believe they'll be done with their services in the middle of January, if indeed this gets approved in the next couple of weeks, so that, their initial thought was about $100,000 would be in 2017 expenses.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On board with the project, because I believe we all know and we've discussed that this is one of our major irons in the fire, so to speak, that that's got to be done and we're going to get it done. And so, the expediency, that's, that's good. And even the price tag, you know, seven and a half percent of this proposed $3 million, seven to 10% in soft costs is actually pretty good. It's on the low end of what we see with commercial building. But yeah, that, you know, just to segue on what Mr. Mesky said, I'm concerned, you know, when we say not to, not to exceed an amount of $3 million, that's the city kind of tipping its hand, so to speak, because when you have a firm, when we have a firm amount in place that is budgeted, I mean, obviously this, you know, it's public record that that's what we have budgeted, therefore, I believe those numbers are going to be reflected when we actually put it out or when the engineer puts it out, you know, the RFQs go out. Myself at work, when I know what a company has to work with, myself and the other manufacturers bid accordingly, and I have no reason to believe that they maybe wouldn't do the same here. So, I think that we may be opening ourselves up to spending more than what we had originally planned and/or budgeted for, and I would hate for that to happen to the detriment of other areas in the budget that we're planning on fulfilling in the year 2018. So, I have no problem with it going forward, even, you know, even with these engineering costs, but I am a little bit hesitant at that not-to-exceed amount. I understand why you did it, and it makes sense, but I maybe think, like I said, it might be tipping our hand a little bit, and we might see higher bids as a result, and that's my main concern.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Ben Nelson.
I understand the timeline and the desire to move quickly so we could begin construction in March, but I'm, and you'll have to excuse me if my memory isn't as good as it should be, but I was thinking that we had approved a master plan for the Civic Center, and part of that was because we were spending $2.4 million on the ice plant, so now we're going to build the ice plant before we get the results back from the master plan. Does that make sense?
Being new here, I just, I think that the rationale behind that was the urgency of the ice, is what I've been told, that the last couple of years, we've been skating on thin ice.
Literally.
So, that's why I think that we're, you know, trying to put this ahead of everything else, is because I look at it, you know, over the years, I've replaced all kinds of, you know, water pumps and backup generators and all those type of things, and if you don't take care of those things, it'll come back to bite you at the worst time. And so, you know, when we talk about not to exceed $3 million, we'll try to do a rush job, you know, and try to do an emergency type of thing and see what kind of pricing you get. And so, I understand, you know, that we're going ahead with this before we do the master plan, but if what I've been told is true, I would caution on the side of, you know, that it could possibly go out. Now, if there's not that, if I'm over-exaggerating that, then I would recommend we can hold off on it.
Councilmember Nelson. That answer your question? Councilmember Nelson.
Just a follow-up to that, the engineering determining the location of where the ice plant would be built, or will there be a couple of options? And then, when they do the engineering, if I understand correctly, they will help to assist to go out and do bids? And does that include financing? Because I know that it has in other communities.
Mr. Brizendine.
Their services would be. Good one, Oki, did that on purpose. Their services would be, indeed that, the design work and the construction documents to help us through the process of the bid letting for the work as well. As for the price tag to it or other issues that you've got, yeah, we don't have any guarantees on the system that's there. As for the master plan, I think the master plan, if approved, is going to be moving somewhat in the same timeframe as this, so if there's any things that come up with the master plan for the Civic Center facilities and properties that would impact this piece of it, there will be timing for that to be addressed. So, where this plant gets located, obviously, I think it, you know, right now, as all things being equal, I think we know where that plant is going to go, just off the north end of the building in between them, so that the piping and such is easily accessible to both facilities. Now, if there's going to be a potential third facility in the, in the long-term plans, then you look at where your options are for placing that. So, I think the design work that is in this agreement allows us to begin this work, but also get the master planning process begin, started for the whole Civic Center property, of which Stevens Engineering is a part of the team that is, is in that process as well. So, I think they're going to move somewhat hand-in-hand in the early stages, and by the time any final report is done on the study, I would, I would think that, you know, the design work will be completed for the project, but the location, not necessarily, because I think the location isn't, I mean, it obviously will come into where the design work will be, but I think they've got enough flexibility on the knowledge of the facility, on where the location is and what impact that would have on, on the actual project of putting the ice plant in. That's my take on it, without referring with Sean or anything, but I believe that that would be something that would be very doable.
Councilmember Mesky.
So, the master plan is going to be done by the same company as this engineering of the ice?
No.
No.
No, this company, the suggested firm that Sean brought to the table for the master plan, Stevens Engineering is the ice-making group that's a part of that. It's a... It's a club, I think it's like 292, I don't remember what the name of the firm is that's leading that, but they've got a number of team members, from architects to, in this case, ice-making folks. So, they're a part of that team that's been put together for that plan.
Well, I think that maybe is an opportunity, then, if we're talking about these, and, you know, we're still debating whether or not we think the $197,000 is reasonable, or however we want to spend that, but is there a way to have them coordinate together before and give us a couple of plans, then, based on what they hear from this other company, about what the, what the layout should look like? I mean, this, this seems like an opportunity to, to maybe have a couple of plans come through that have already been vetted with price tags that would work, and that we can take a look at when they're there. I mean, that's something that's, I think, quite unique here, and then we're not really putting the cart before the horse if they're having it at the same time.
I guess the concern I have is if, you know, this is the first I heard that, if that's the company, if they're working hand-in-hand, then I agree with you. I mean, we're getting the cart way in front of the horse. I mean, if they're already looking at the ice plant as part of the overall review, then why are we talking about this when it's in part of the review? Counselor Nelson.
I had not heard that the company we selected for the master plan had anything to do with this company. I think there, it feels like there's more that we need to learn about that piece, and how that work's going to work in, if this is a sub of that, or some of that. I've not heard that comment made before, and I thought we were talking about two separate, two separate projects here.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, they are two separate projects. All I'm saying is that Stevens Engineering is a firm that is in the team that was the choice of, of staff for the overall study of the Civic Center property. So they've got Stevens Engineering, they've got SRF Consulting, they've got three or four different firms that all have specialties that are going to be working on the Civic Center study. Stevens Engineering is, you know, the ice plant expert, so that's why they're coming to the table for this one. So, although I think they're two separate projects, the location, depending on what the overall master plan says for the facility, and where the plant gets located, I think can be decided somewhere in the process of all this, versus, right now, we hire Stevens Engineering, we know where the plant is. I don't think that's necessarily a, a decision that has to be made tomorrow. So I, I think that's the opportunity with the fact that Stevens Engineering is working on both projects, that they would bring that expertise to the table.
Do they also have a company that's going to bid on doing the ice project?
Well, they work with all the contractors, and in most cases, they try to find local folks that would do a lot of the work, you know, the generic work that it would take. But yeah, there's X number of, of firms that they work with. They'll open, you know, it's a bid process, so they'll open up the whole thing. Are you talking about this work, or are you talking about the ma- master plan?
No, I'm talking about when the engineering is done, and it's put out for bids, will they be part of the company that will bid on doing the ice plant?
They're the engineering firm that does the design work, so I don't, you know, I don't know where they'll, good question, I, I can't answer that.
Counselor Christians.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We need to get this done quickly, and, and we can't have requests for bids until we have an engineered of in LA. So I, I am assuming this will be in tonight's, we're going to add it to tonight's council packet.
That's the request, Mr. Palmer.
So, we, we just need to get going on it, and I know they're two separate projects, but this needs to be done, and then they can come up with a location if they're considering a third one. I don't think it's going to be that tough, because it would probably go on the north side of both of those buildings. So I, I think we just need to move forward with the council meeting tonight and move on.
Counselor Rosmas.
I agree that we need to move forward, because I don't, we don't want to get into the position where it breaks down and we don't have the ice for the whole season for a lot of the different activities. But my concern, and it's what we're talking about, is if we don't have the ice plant in a strategic place, I don't want us to be in a position five or 10 years down the road where we're maybe ready to put in a third sheet of ice, and then we go, oh, but if we only would have put it here. That, to me, would be our worst error. This is a huge project, $2 million. And the other concern I have is, are we paying for engineering costs twice, then? With these two firms?
I don't know that there's a way to know that answer. I mean, what we're hearing is they're consulting to the 292 Design Company, so I don't know if they're consulting to them and charging us for that fee, and then designing on this. I mean, that, of course, is not unusual in the consulting world, but. City Administrator Holland.
I, I would just say, no, we're, we're not paying twice. And, you know, Stevens does the, basically, the specs. They're going to do the specs. And then, when they do the master plan, they're going to be the subject matter expert and cost estimator, you know, overall, for any additional type of, you know, like you're saying, a third, you know, sheet of ice, or something like that. So, they won't be doing design work during that master plan. That'll be just more of consultant-type things, and hypothetical situations, and, and also lay out alternatives and cost estimates on those type of things, and say, okay, if you build this building, here's a ballpark price on that, and so forth. So, we won't be paying for that twice.
Counselor Member Elverado followed by Nelson.
I was just wondering, what's the timeline on the master plan? And then, what I'm understanding is that the ice won't be worked on until March. Will the master plan be in place prior to the actual working of the ice plant in March? What's, what's that? Is it going to be, do you have any idea how that's going to flow?
I will let Steve chime in here, but I will say, in most master plans, I mean, you're looking at anywhere from 90 days to six months, just depending on the scope of the project.
Okay, but they've already done an initial plan, haven't they? At one time, and then we kind of shelved it? Is, did I, am I not, that's not correct, okay.
They've looked at it, but they haven't done a formal plan.
Okay, they've, they've already done some seed work, so to speak?
Right.
Okay.
Counselor Nelson.
Well, I certainly feel a sense of urgency. I think we have been living with this urgency for several years, and I'm just wondering if we couldn't accept this information and ask for clarification. Is two weeks really going to make a major difference? I realize, Mr. Brezina, that you've been kind of put on the spot that Sean's not here, and it feels like there's some additional clarification, I think, with the timing of the master plan, and with the, with this, that, I'm just wondering if we couldn't wait two weeks to, to vote on this.
Counselor Vagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we, we keep talking about a third sheet of ice, maybe. Does anyone know, is it for hockey and skating, or is it for curling? If we do a third sheet?
Mayor Calvin, I assume that's what the process of the study will bring out, is where the needs are, and, and what the city's long-term plan would be for that property? So I, there's no preconceived notion as to what that facility would be, from my perspective.
Okay, because if it's for curling, they desire a different type of ice-making equipment. So, it wouldn't matter where the ice-making machinery goes if you're not going to add a curling sheet. If you had a curling sheet, they'll have their separate area for mechanicals.
Yeah, I think the systems are sophisticated enough now to allow for this system, if it was going to work on a, a third sheet of ice, that, that system would be independent, so to speak, and would be able to be in the, the parameters of what they use for their ice versus what the temperature of the ice is for a typical hockey arena.
So it'd be like zoning for a furnace?
That's, in our, when Sean and I have talked to Stevens Engineering about that, that's, that's what we're hearing them say.
So that's something new, then, in the last few years?
That, yeah, I mean, those are questions that we asked, based upon the conversations that him and I were a part of with the curling group, you know, in the, in the past. We haven't spent a lot of time in those meetings, but that was a specific question that was asked of Stevens, and, and they thought very comfortable that if a third sheet of ice was added, and it was a curling sheet, that this system would.
So our consultants would tell us that, then?
If I could just add to that, part of that master plan is, is part of community output, and, and outreach, and surveying, and so that's, will be part of that also, that decision. It's not like the engineers are going to tell us, this is what you need. They're going to gather that information based upon the demands and the request of everyone, all the stakeholders in the community.
Okay, there's a request to move this to the council meeting. We have one council member that's requesting us to do that. We've got another council member that is requesting us not to do there. Is there a sense of urgency from council to move it to the agenda tonight?
I think so.
Okay, I'm seeing five yeses, and I'm seeing a couple of fences. I'm seeing six yeses. We'll move it to the council. Next up is the approval of an evaluation review form for our city administrator. And at our last council meeting, council had requested us to look at the process that is used, and the form that was designed by Mr. McGuire. And in our packets is a six-month performance evaluation form that Mr. McGuire had presented to us, and I will tell you that there is some question as to whether or not we should use this form, or if we should use another form, but as a council, when Mr. McGuire presented this to us, this is what we said we wanted to use. And so, so because of that, I'm bringing this to you guys, so that you can discuss it, and say, yes, this is a form we want to use. The other thing that we need to determine tonight, because Mr. McGuire, I think he sent an email to all of us, Mr. McGuire is wanting to know whether we want him, his services or not. And he's more than happy to help us, but if we can do it internally, you know, kind of like, and some of us were not around for previous reviews that happened, but our city attorney gathered the data, collected it, reported it back. We now have an HR director that we didn't have in the past. You know, I think we need to use, you know, a third person to send that, review that information, bring it to council, have the conversation. There's also a doodle poll out there for meeting on the 16th to go over that evaluation, so we meet the intent of the six-month review process. So, I'm bringing this back to council, because you asked for it to be brought back. This is a form that Mr. McGuire had prepared, and is this the form you wish to choose to move forward with, and then how do you want that process to work, so that Mr. Holland is aware of the parameters that he's going to be evaluated on? He also sent out over the weekend the list of things that we'd asked him to do, and the performance indicators of each of those indicators. So, is there someone who wishes to speak to this issue this evening? Counselor Member Nelson, followed by Mesky.
You just stated that there was another form. In reviewing this form, I'm more concerned about the process of how we're going to do it. I'm, I'm just curious where the other form is, if, if we're supposed to be picking a form.
No, there's not another form. What was suggested at the last meeting was, is that Mr. Holland was saying that he could develop a form for us to use.
Okay.
That is not in front of us, because this is what you asked to be brought back. So we're bringing that, back what you, what you'd requested. Counselor Member Mesky.
Is this Mr. McGuire's intellectual property that we're looking at?
He did not tell us it was his intellectual property.
Well, I'm curious if we can use his form without having him here. First question. Second question would be, Mr. Holland, I'm going to ask you, if you've looked at this, and if you think this is acceptable to be using through euphoria evaluation, or would you have any concerns about this form?
Well, first, I will address, as far as his intellectual property, I'm not an attorney or anything like that, but I mean, he did produce it while he was under the payroll of.
Okay, that answers my question, then, yep.
Of the city, and I, I've reviewed the form, and, and I'm fine with it. It, it covers a lot of areas. To me, I, I'm more of a simplistic person, you know, I'd rather have a list of five than a list of 25. I think that explains, you know, my, if I had any criticism of it, it was just, that's maybe too much. So, but overall, it's fine. It covers, you know, all the key areas of being a city administrator.
So I'm seeing, I'm sorry, Counselor Member Nelson, did you wish to speak again?
Just to clarify, so you asked us to, whether we were okay with the form, but also, I think, more important than the form, is the process of, if we complete the form, of what's going to happen with the form afterwards. And I guess I'm concerned, we set a process in place. I'm not so much hung up on whether Mr. McGuire does this or not, but I do think we need someone to facilitate us through the process of collecting the document, putting it together, the information together, and coming up with a process, so when we sit down, that we have someone leading that process. And I don't believe that it should be Mr. Holland, and I don't believe that it should be our HR person. I think we do need someone to facilitate this.
Mr. Scott, you helped us out the last time, and I know we sent the information to you, you compiled the data, and then kind of gave a report back out, as I remember. Am I remembering correctly or incorrectly? I think you worked with Gary on that.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. I did serve, I characterize it more as an administrative support role for that evaluation, and that was, I would say, unusual in our experience, working for cities, to fill that role, simply because when cities do have an HR director, I think that's typically performed by the HR director, so I wouldn't expect that you would look to me to provide those services this time. My role, I think, ideally would be to advise the council on making sure that your process is legal, that you're satisfying all the requirements to either close the meeting, or if the employee wants it open, conduct it properly under an open meeting, and comply with all confidentiality requirements of the Data Practices Act. I think the actual nuts and bolts of the evaluation, the substance of it, should really be directed by your HR director. And I, I mean, I'm sure that's probably what she expects, and I think that would be the, the natural course of things. It's not to say the council couldn't look outside and bring Mr. McGuire back. He did offer to do that. I'm sure he would do a good job, so if the council has that comfort level, there's no, you know, reason not to do that. But based on my experience, how this usually works, I think the HR director would feature more prominently than, than I should.
Okay. Counselor Nelson.
Just a follow-up, I, I guess, just in my experience, I find it uncomfortable that we would ask someone to participate in the evaluation of their supervisor. And, and I guess, and, I do feel strongly about that.
Counselor Mesky.
Isn't the, the role of an HR director here just to compile the data that was generated by the council, is that not right?
Yeah, that would be my response, I guess, is the HR director is not conducting the evaluation. the evaluation. She is overseeing a process, an HR process. It's the council that is filling out the form, that's going to be deliberating and trying to reach a consensus on an overall opinion of performance.
That, that is the role of the council. Our, we are to evaluate the city administrator.
Correct.
And I think we have, I think we can do that. I think, I was just concerned about a tool coming almost to the end of the six-month period. If you're comfortable using it, I will use the form. I was prepared to go with your written comments to the list that we had given you because this form did not get in our hands in a timely fashion. But if you're quite okay with this, I'm very much okay with it. And I'm very okay, I think, with the HR director compiling the data. And if, um, if she is part of the meeting where we actually talk about the data, as long as, I think if she's just there to provide the data, I don't think, you know, she's not going to be part of the evaluation process. And if you're there to make sure that we're doing everything legal, I think we can handle this ourselves.
Mayor.
Mr. Holland.
If, if I could just add to this, um, the, the, basically the counseling or the, you know, the conversation that we have after my six months is usually, my experience has been, whatever, over the last decade, is generally the mayor leads that conversation with the council. Um, I've never had an outside third-party consultant or anything like that. Um, usually, the first half is the mayor, and then the second half is if I have any questions or follow-up on any questions, that someone's saying, Ike, you should have done this or that. And then if I say, could you elaborate some more on that, or something to that effect. But, um, you know, and then as far as the HR director, generally, they're not part of the executive session. They can compile that information, but it, it does put them in a compromising position. And, and even for myself, I wouldn't want subordinates, um, in, in the executive session when, when we're talking about my evaluation, um, just for confidentiality and, and comfortability or whatever. So I would just recommend that, um, you have someone you dedic, uh, designate to collect that information, and they can compile it, or they can just collect it and then give it to the mayor. Or B, just send it directly to the mayor and let him compile it. And then thirdly, I would say, let's have the conversation and let the mayor lead that conversation.
Can we need to get this off the, I'm sorry, councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't know the cities or counties you worked for, but, uh, you know, we're a charter city, strong council, weak mayor. Uh, I have confidence in our HR person. I was looking forward to her, um, tabulating it and bringing it to us. Typically, I think it would be, uh, maybe the chair of a labor committee that would bring it to the council. And we don't have one presently. We should have one, along with the finance committee, but I, I, I go along with Mr. Scott's recommendation. I mean, she, she, she's not, our HR director's not going to, um, be part of the executive committee that, that presents it to you and, and your findings. We're making this way too hard. We're just, let's, let's do the evaluations, let the HR person, uh, compile it and give us the numbers and the, the final totals, and then we'll sit down and, and, uh, chat, you know? I don't think, there's nothing, there's no mystery to it.
Councilmember Nelson.
I am frustrated that before we went through the hiring process, we put a process in place so that we didn't have the same things happen that we did the last times. And for those of you around the table, when we did performance appraisals before, it was very difficult and it was very uncomfortable. And I would like us to consider that we need to have a process in place, and we put one in place so that we didn't have to walk down that path again. I remain uncomfortable with the thought of someone compiling their supervisor's information. And I will leave it at that. Um, I can go along with the form, but I truly believe we need someone to facilitate the review. And that's what we agreed to before we did the hiring process.
Councilmember Plon, can our, can our legal counsel tabulate the data?
Not necessary.
Well, I'm just, I'm.
That's what happened before.
Yep. He, he, he certainly is able to do that. His recommendation was that we use our HR director. And we haven't had the HR director before, and you know, in, in.
So I'm saying, what's the other option? I mean.
Right.
Either we do it or we don't.
Right, right. So where, I think where we're at at this point is that, um, we need to decide how we want to do the process. Um, you know, you'll remember that our last city administrator we did an evaluation on when we had a labor committee. It actually was done two months late. Um, and so what I'm trying to do as the mayor is to put it in front of you and get it done on time. That's what I'm trying to do. And I'm sorry if I keep, you know, pushing the broken record, but, you know, we need to move this process forward because it's not fair to our administrator. It wasn't fair to our last administrator. The evaluation wasn't done, uh, in a timely fashion, and it won't be fair to this administrator if we don't do it in a timely fashion. That's my concern. And as, as far as a weak mayor or a strong mayor, it doesn't make any difference. I mean, you know, the mayor's the mayor. And in our, in our committee structure, the work never got done on our evaluation for administrator on, in a timely fashion. So I agree, we're making a mo, not a molehill here, but it seems like that's what we do when we evaluate our administrator. Councilmember Mesky.
I think the HR director's a confidential employee, and she can compile these things. If we don't think she can compile these things, I will volunteer to compile these things. And there's, there's eight councilmembers. I can compile eight, eight surveys if that would make you comfortable as well. But I do believe that our HR person should be able to compile them. She's a confidential employee, and I would assume that she would keep all of that information in confidence, and she would not be part of the executive discussion. So either way, either, I think, I don't think the city attorney, as you just heard, I don't think it's their job to be doing that kind of work. But if it can be the HR director, I would volunteer my services.
Councilmember, uh, Ilvaro.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, information is power, and, um, and I think that it's important that, um, I would prefer at, like Ike says, um, he's the administrator for the city, and then we have the directors underneath him. Um, I don't believe it's, um, maybe good for them to have, somebody below him to have something that may be used in a way that might be inappropriate. I'm not saying that anybody would do that, but I would prefer that, uh, councilmember, uh, Mesky compile the data, um, that we would share what we would share with you, and then it would go, go with you and stay with you and, and not go any further than that if we have written comments. Um, so my, my preference would be use, to use Mr., uh, councilmember Mesky as the, um, compiler of the data.
Okay. So are we in favor of moving this to the full council? Because we can't take a vote on it unless it's at the full council. Or is there consensus so we don't have to take it to the full council? Councilmember Nelson.
So if councilmember Mesky compiles the data, who's going to facilitate the discussion?
Well, I'm hearing concern from councilmember Christensen that I not do it. So I would, I would allow Mr. Mesky to do that. I'm, he's more than capable of doing it. Um, I think anybody sitting at this table could do it.
Well, as a junior councilmember, I'd be happy to do that.
Do we have consensus? Mr. Holland, I think you know your process. Let's go on to the joint powers agreement. Mr. Brizendike.
That we skip?
Yeah, I'm going to skip that one just in the interest of time.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, uh, this discussion item is, uh, about the joint powers agreement between the City of Wilmer and Wilmer Public Schools as it relates to community education and recreation services. Oh, moving that one, but not my own, Jesus.
Man, you're going to, you're going to have all kinds of.
Holy smokes, where am I at? Here we are. All right. Um, so bottom line, in, uh, 2000, the two entities, public schools and, um, City of Wilmer merged the community education and recreation departments. A little bit of history in, in what led to that. Um, the City of Wilmer's had a recreation department since the early 30s, uh, or late 30s, early ni, uh, 1940s, to the best of my ability to research this. A gentleman by the name of George Benson was hired as a summer recreation coordinator, along with, um, he was also a FIAD teacher and athletic director, but he also helped run the skating rinks and other services like that in the wintertime as well. And, uh, back then, um, and, and throughout the history, much of the recreation programming has been around, uh, adult and youth sports, ice rinks, warming houses. We've had gymnastics and dance programs, arts and crafts and park games that, um, programs as they built shelters in the parks. Um, they were staffing those with, uh, in many cases, uh, FIAD teachers, uh, that would like summer work. Um, they also did tiny co, talk classes, especially events, and then there's always been lifeguards at the beach and, and waiting pool when that facility was built in the 1950s. Uh, the school end of, of the programming pieces have basically been around since 1975. Ron Warner was the first community education director in, um, Wilmer Public Schools. Uh, the history of programming has usually been, has typically been around early education, adult basic education, aquatics, uh, the kids castle, which is now the Cardinal Place School Age Care Program, uh, day trips and, and other adult and youth enrichment activities. So in March of 2000, the city and Wilmer Public Schools merged the community education and recreation, um, departments, or leisure services as it was called, into a one-stop shop for the consumer, uh, with the thoughts of reducing duplication of programs and providing a collaborative approach to programming and use of facilities. Um, I was hired in the summer of 1999, and one of the first tasks that Assistant Superintendent Kathy Liedem at that time and Mick Schmidt had asked me to do was to research, um, other communities that had joined, uh, services such as this. And in doing so, uh, we, we looked at Hutchinson and, and Marshall as the two, um, nearest us that had these services provided through one entity, uh, along with Fairbault was doing the same thing at the time. Then I would state that many of the smaller communities, um, in, in the state, uh, mostly those probably in a population of five to 7,500, 5,000 to 7,500 people, still do this approach, uh, from a collaborative standpoint. Uh, but most of it under the city are under the public schools versus the cities that they, they serve. So the flow chart in 2000 looks similar to this. And, and why at the point of merger did it, was it somewhat easy to make a decision because the two firms mirrored each other? They each had an administrative, uh, support staff, um, one person. Uh, the city's is Becky Sorenson, who's, is still with the department. Um, we had a public school, uh, employee that was providing administrative services. From a programming perspective, so the base community education and the recreation leisure service department each had two full-time employees, um, doing work for them. On the city side, we had, uh, Leanne Freeman, who was doing mostly women's and girls' recreation programming is how the duties were split between her and Dave Gort, who was doing the men's and boys' recreation work. Oh, I'm down, uh, behind one, aren't I? Uh, maybe two even. Um, on the, on the school side, we had more coordinators throughout the program. When you take early childhood and adult basic education services into it, but what was merged was the programming pieces, and that was two youth and adult enrichment folks, um, that dealt with those types of activities, along with the aquatic program, which at that point was the, um, uh, mostly the swim lessons in any club settings that were taking place around aquatics. Um, there was still a school age care coordinator that, that was somewhat of a standalone program, the early childhood program coordinator and adult basic education consortium manager. We're also on the school side of the equation, um, that obviously a part of a merger, but not necessarily what was merged. Today, this is what the flow chart looks like. Um, Becky Sorenson's still in his place as an administrative support person. We also have an early childhood, um, support person, as well as a Cardinal Place support person that are in the office area. Our coordination staff that, that answered to, to myself, the director, Rob Baumgart's in the civic center manager's position. When we first merged, that was not, um, duties that were the responsibility of the community ed and rec director. Uh, the, the city engineer, public works director was overseeing the civic center at that time. Um, you see Melissa Saint as a new hire as a Cardinal Place coordinator. Jody Wambach's been a long-term, um, early childhood program coordinator. Tammy Ruddenigan was in the role as a community ed coordinator upon the merger. Um, her duties today are youth and adult enrichment activities, some special needs programming, as well as, um, helping to program out at the community center. Pam Brewink is a school employee who is actually reimbursed for, um, from the public, uh, from the recreation department, i.e. City of Wilmer. Uh, so she took the place of, um, Leanne Freeman is, is where that duties would have, uh, um, merged, so to speak. Pam's responsibilities are aquatics, uh, the, the Dorothy Olson Aquatics in her operation. She does special events and also wellness programming for us. Um, we've added the child guides. Uh, when I first got here, the child guides were a school district program that was assisted by the s, City of Wilmer and other agencies in funding it. Um, the city and school district themselves dropped out of funding the child guide program, and they've been with community education about the last eight or nine years. Uh, Tom Moore is a youth recreation, and he helps with Parks Trails and Special Olympics. He's also, um, now a school district employee, but is reimbursed, uh, by the city for his services. And Ryan Harper does facilities and adult recreation services and then Antrokles, the ABE managers, um, for the ABE consortium. So looking at programs, um, better get us up one slide here. I believe what we've done is merged the middle pieces, the youth enrichment, the adult enrichment, facility management, youth recreation, adult recreation, and, and wellness programming. Um, the city still has programming out at the community center. The civic center's a standalone budget item. Park plan and development, um, takes place with, within our depart, department and, and much of it on myself, as well as assisting the engineering and public works department on bike and to, uh, pedestrian trails. Um, the school still has its standalone programs, the early education, um, adult basic education, the Cardinal Place School Age Care Program, the child guides and, and the aquatics, um, that take place from a swim lesson perspective. So I think when we look at the duties of my position, it's, it's, um, encompassing all of these activities, but the things that were merged and what take up, um, a proportionate amount of time are the things that are in the middle from a programming perspective. And I think as we look to move forward with this, and I, I should have prefaced this a little bit, uh, the reason we're giving this conver, or giving this presentation this evening is, three years ago, when we signed the latest, um, agreement between the city and school district, it was decided by the policymakers at that point to look at this agreement every three years. And the three-year reason was that that's the length of the, um, term of the community ed and rec advisory members. So, um, that timeframe happens in October of this year, thus why we're having this discussion now. Um, the other piece of this equation is the, um, most likely retirement of the director. Um, the, it's my intent at this point to work through June of 2018 and, uh, maybe go off to some quieter pastures or something at that point. But, um, bottom line is, I think it made sense to look at, if you're just going to look at the agreement is one thing, but you've got a potential retirement, um, staring you in the face. So instead of signing another agreement or, or, in essence, this, uh, um, agreement stands unless there's been a 12-month notice, which each have given each other, um, for us to review this going forward. And if indeed, this is still the right thing to do regarding these two programs, and if this merger still, um, fits for both entities. So, um, I think the timing is right to review all options in front of us. Um, and then as we make decisions regarding the collaboration that's in place, then as you look for a replacement for myself. for myself, you will know what you'll be looking for. Either the entities will go their separate ways, and they'll each hire someone, or you'll stay with the collaboration and maybe look at what the agreement is and how it spells everything out, and maybe make some adaptations to that, but not necessarily going your separate So we've got, my computer's just having a lot of fun with me today, guys. I don't know what's going on here. I'll just steer this way. So the budgets, from a financial perspective, we've, we've merged the programming pieces, but we've kind of left the budget sitting out there on your own. You've got a school budget and a city budget still taking place with community education and recreation services. So on the city's side of the equation, we've got the leisure service budget, which is what we merged, the programming pieces of the leisure service budget is what we merged. The civic center has its own standalone budget. The community center has its standalone budget, and the aquatics center has a standalone budget for the city's side of the equation of the work I do. The school budget's very similar. You've got a standalone general community education program, that's adult and youth enrichment, along with the Cardinal Place program. The adult basic education programming has its own budget, early childhood family ed, school readiness, and preschool screening, all have their own standalone budgets that in the UFR's coding for school districts close out to their own areas. So the collaboration here is about the leisure service budget and the general community education budget. What's taken place in the time that we've had attrition of two employees of the city budget, they've become school district employees, and the city, inside the leisure service budget, reimburses the school district for those two employees. But the rest of that budget for leisure services is the day-to-day work that takes place around programming. So whether that's paying officials, or lifeguards, or lifeguards at the beach, I should say, lifeguards at the aquatics center in their own budget. But that's the type of work that's still inside of the budget that the city has for leisure services. So I, I think in its entirety there, from a budgeting perspective, we've stayed somewhat separate from an accounting perspective, but we've been able to merge the programming, and what we've done is use a history of where did programs belong. So most cases, the city recreation program deals with recreational programs, and the community ed school piece of it deals with enrichment-type activities. Not recreational, not sports and nature. So mainly, historically, and mainly at my decision-making ability, is where things get placed in the budget. Is it a school item, or is it a city item? And I think I've just tried to use the guidelines of what we've had in the past, of what has been traditionally city recreation, and what has been traditionally school district programming. So that, a fair amount of information. I've tried to condense it a little bit. I've given this to the school board already. Our joint powers board got it last week. I've met with Audrey, and Ike, and Jeff, and Linda Mathiason, and the leaders of the community ed and rec board, and discussed this with them. I think I would stand for questions, and leave it up to Mr. Holland for other points that you guys might have for him regarding this as well.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for the report, and thank you for sharing the fact that you shared it with a number of others, people in the, in the community already as well. So council questions, Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve. You mentioned you're going to be retiring June next year. Is there someone on staff that can step up, or are we going to have to go outside and get somebody to fill your shoes?
If you're asking me, as the person in this chair, is there somebody that could succeed me in staff? Yeah, I believe there is. Whether or not they would want to or not is another story. To be a community education director for a school district, you need a license to do that. There is a staff person that is licensed, a community ed director, has another significant role with the system, but I don't, I don't know what would be the best option. I think, I think in this case, if indeed, we stay merged, I think that the search should continue, and I wouldn't just necessarily stay internal with something like that, although there is internal candidates.
And then, you know, since the merger, are you satisfied with how it's working? I mean, is it working well, or is there some areas that could be better, as far as the city's part of it?
I think we always can do better. And I think especially when you have a chance to put fresh eyes on things and fresh thoughts into it. I think it's gone well. I think it was the right thing to do at that time, and I think it's been the right thing to continue this collaboration. I think there are some things that we should look at, if indeed, we would move this forward for the future. And I think much of that would be around what the agreement states, so what the role of the advisory council is, and the things that they would advise on. And then I would look at what the duties of this position are. It's a pretty demanding position right now, because there's a lot of things happening on both sides of that equation, for you to be able to give each program area the, the time that they need. I think because of the growth of things, it's, it's, it's not the easiest job on any given day, and there's a lot of things that need attention, and I think I've done my best to be able to give everybody what they need to be successful, but I think there are some things that you might have to look at in the future as to how you can maybe streamline some of the work that this person does, either through new help from one other, one entity or both entities, from that perspective. But when we first merged, I wasn't doing the community center work. The park development wasn't near as, as much as it is. The adult basic education program had five schools versus the 10 that it has now. Early childhood programming, the last five, six years, has really exploded, and we've actually got the assistance to do a lot of that work, but I, I think there's just some things that we should look at from a job description standpoint for the position, for the person in this position.
I've heard some concerns, I mean, we don't have any city employees under yourself now. There was, but they've-
Becky Sorenson's still there.
Pardon me?
Becky Sorenson, the clerical, yep.
My fault. But I've heard some concerns about, the city owns all the parks and the ball fields and the civic center, and we don't really have, should I say, control over it. It's, we basically handed it over to CER, Community Ed and Rec, which is 99% employed by school employees. I've just heard that concern, and I don't know, I think you've addressed some of that here, saying that you're comfortable with what's, how it's working, so, thank you.
I would just piggyback on what you just said there, Ron. I think that, I've heard that as well, but the parks and the ball fields are all still manned by city employees. Kenny Nelson does all the work at the baseball fields. Gary Manzer's leading the park charges. Rob Baumgarn's at the civic center, and all those people are, are city employees. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think there's reasons for some of that.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, thanks for the presentation tonight, and genuine, personal thanks from myself, because the last three years, I've had the opportunity to sit back and read all the intricacies of these programs, and just the, the fact that this joint venture, it's not a simple thing, and it's, to put all the programming together is very difficult. And yeah, I think it's going to be a fairly demanding job for whomever we're going to find next to do it. We're going to have to have some talent at the table. But I also think, you know, what we're, what we're looking for, and I, I think what's been done currently from a consumer level, my family's been able to, to utilize a lot of these services as, as my kids get older, and the fact that our family, when it comes time to find programs and register, and then go to the different programs, the process seems pretty simple and seamless and, and well-integrated, and so I think that in and of itself kind of speaks to the fact that what you're doing and what has been done is working. And so, like you pointed out, there's, there's no perfect program. It hasn't achieved perfection. We can always do better, but in terms of, of usage, just from a, from a user's standpoint, like I said, for our family, it's been pretty seamless, and it's been a good community service to us and our family, and so I, I imagine that's the same citywide, so, thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Brizden, for your presentation. I do think that we are lucky to have the partnership between two government agencies. As the city council representative on the community center board, I am privy to some of, if you want, frustration of representation at the community center, and, and we're in a, we're in a position now where we may be looking at having to have a new one, and I really feel it's important that we have somebody who is an advocate for the community center, that's going to champion what's going to happen with it. And I feel like there's been a little disconnect right now between, when we lost the city employee that used to work from the community center, now we have a custodian that is there for half-days, and then the rest of it is run by volunteers, pretty much. I would like to see us have somebody at that building to help coordinate some of the programming between community ed and rec, and what the community center offers, because like I said, right now, there's a little bit of a disconnect, and I think we need to work on improving that, and having more visibility with the community center.
I wouldn't disagree, agree with that. I would just point out that there is probably more programming taking place, either at that facility or for the folks of that, number of folks that, that are out there. And much of that is from a volunteer basis, and that really goes back to the roots of how that facility was started, with the partnership between the city and the senior club at the time. Now, obviously, times have changed, and many of the members of that senior club have either aged, or in many cases, passed on us, and I think everything has an evolution to it, and I think that's where we're at with that facility, is just in that middle ground of what, what next. So I, I do believe that it's as cared for as it ever has been, and I do believe, from a programming perspective, you're seeing more programs than ever before. Much of it done through the hard work and efforts of Darlene Schrader, and, and the things in the group that she's working with have brought a lot of different activities to that facility. And I don't disagree that there probably is a need for staffing out there. So how do you do that? Do you do that in a staff, you know, more part-time help, or do you up the level a little bit and try to get program staff out there? I, I think that's a decision that has to come, and we've kind of been in a little bit of a holding pattern with some of that from a staff perspective, as to what's the decision with that facility. And I think that instead of worrying about that aspect of it, we probably should just take the step back and say, well, the facility is what it is now, we should just deal with it, instead, instead of worrying about, well, what, what is that facility going to be, and let some of that come into play.
And I can appreciate-
Your point is well taken.
I can appreciate that, but I don't, I don't think we would have a volunteer run the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center. I don't think we'd have a volunteer running the civic center, and I would just like to see us have a staff person out at the community center. I think that's something we can, we should be working towards.
I, I don't disagree with that at all. I just state that we don't have a volunteer running the community center, although I know the perception is indeed that that's what's happening, but.
Steve, thank you for your report. I know one of the things in talking with previous administrators, they've told me the second hardest position in the city is your job. So as you identify it today and say there's a lot of challenges that come with it, you know, from the mayor's office, I see that. I get the phone calls, I hear the, or I get the emails, you know, and, and all of that. And, you know, I try to be as supportive of you and your staff, and, as, as we can be with the information we have, so, thank you for your report, and-
My pleasure.
Good luck as this process moves forward.
Indeed.
Look forward to it.
Okay. Next, we have the stormwater ordinance. This issue has to be addressed this evening, so Mr. Scott? My understanding is, is that Mr. Christiansen was going to help you with this, but he's been called out of town on a family matter that he's unable to be here this evening.
That's right. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to at least give the council a, an update on amendments that Sean and I are working on to the stormwater ordinance. You'll recall that this stems from the enforcement action that the MPCA initiated some time ago, that resulted in a stipulation agreement that the city approved. One of the, a lot of the terms of the stipulation agreement involved the city updating policies and developing forms for use with DAF and, and things like that, which I understand the city has already addressed and submitted proof of compliance to the MPCA. This piece deals with changes to the actual city stormwater ordinance. Some of the findings the MPCA made in their notice of violations to the city, found that the city's existing stormwater management ordinances were not compliant with the most recent MS4 permit that the city is covered by. So the first thing I think I need to do is just explain to you what you have in your packet today. You have a draft ordinance. It's all presented, it's not presented in the format that it will eventually come to the city council in. This is just shown as what, an idea of what chapter 17 in your city code would look like. And what you have right now, in your, in the way of stormwater ordinances, are basically two ordinances. One of them, ordinance 1227, dates back to about 1990. That ordinance is actually uncodified. You're not going to find it on Unicode. I'm not sure the full story behind why that would be, but one of my overall recommendations is, as you're making changes to your stormwater ordinance that are required by the MPCA, move everything into chapter 17, so it's all in one place, and it's convenient to the public. So I think that's something that's easy to take care of, doing this. What you have in your packet is a draft of what chapter 17 could look like, and I need to maybe walk you through it a little bit. I had prepared this as a markup, actually, and what was in your packet just shows this as, I think all the changes were accepted. So I want you to understand that, in addition to ordinance 1227, the city also currently has an existing illicit discharge and illegal connection ordinance. That's in your existing code now. That was prepared in 2012 by staff. I know our office had some role in reviewing it at that time. That ordinance exists, starting at section 1726 in your existing code. So that's included in this overall draft of chapter 17 before you. And in fact, it's, I think it starts at page 30 of the draft ordinance that's in your packet. At page 30, everything from that point on, there's no substantive changes made to your existing code. This is an ordinance that the MPCA did not identify in their notice of violations as being efficient. I think you're in good shape with article four in chapter 17 right now, as I have it labeled in your draft ordinance. Everything that comes before page 30, so articles one, two, and three of the ordinance, would essentially replace your existing ordinance 1227. This is the ordinance that the city's had on the books since 1990. This is the ordinance that all of MPCA's notices of violations focused on. And it's, there's some, I think, provisions in 1227 that have made it into this draft, but if I can characterize the issues that MPCA identified in their notice of violations, they focused on the city's existing controls, regulating erosion, sediment, and waste controls, regulating discharges to the stormwater system that are associated with ongoing construction activity, as well as, I think most extensively, post-construction stormwater management. So in other words, once a project is completed, what are the implications for the stormwater system and runoff? Each of those topics are addressed. The erosion and sediment control, as well as the discharges associated with construction activity, are in, they begin in article two of the ordinance that's before you. The post-construction, post-construction stormwater management regulations are in article three of what's before you. So the other thing I want the council to understand is, under the stipulation agreement, there's a deadline for compliance, which actually still sounds like it's a little bit out there, but given the calendar and the way it works out, is actually pretty, coming up pretty quickly, we have to approve an ordinance that complies with the MS4 permit by November 15th. So that would be, that would mean approving the ordinance, giving it a public hearing, and approving it on November 6th, which of course means it would need to be introduced at the next meeting on October 16th. Having said all that, Sean and I both were unexpectedly out of the office for a bit for family obligations last week. We haven't- We haven't gone through the draft that's before you in great detail yet. We still have that work to do. What you see is an example. It's pulled from other communities, not just one, but several communities whose ordinances we know are in compliance with the MPCA's MS4 permit. There is work yet to do between Sean and I to go through this line by line. This is going to change somewhat before it's in final format for the council to consider at the next meeting. So understand, I guess, that. With that said, are there any questions or concerns from the council? And I guess before I open it up to questions and concerns, what I would tell the council is, my plan would be for you to see, in addition to the draft ordinance that we're going to present to you for introduction at the next meeting, a guide that shows exactly, you know, this provision's being suggested to be added, and referencing the requirement in the MS4 permit that we're trying to satisfy, so you know exactly why each provision that's going to be in this ordinance is is there. And to the extent Sean and I are recommending anything that is not strictly required by the permit, we'd identify that as well, so the council knows if there's a provision that isn't necessarily required to be in the final ordinance, you'll know that to aid in your discussion of this in two weeks. With that, I guess, update on our progress on this ordinance. Are there any questions from the council, concerns about process? I'm happy to try and answer anything you have.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is 38 pages long. I mean, how long was our previous one?
Well.
This is a lot of stuff. You go by line by line on here, you're going to take some time.
Yes, I understand, and.
It's typical of government to do this.
So what you have currently on the books, from page 30 on, is already on your books. You have Ordinance 1227, which.
That's eight pages. In other words, they're adding considerable amount here, just to cover.
It is. There is. And I think there are opportunities to streamline some of what's before you. Sean and I will have that work to do yet. This is an example. I think it's fair to say that the ordinance you have is sort of a menu of everything you could possibly include. We are going to be narrowing that.
And and this is all due to requirement by the state for our MS4 permit.
It's all resulting in the MS4.
If I may.
Yes.
Ask you a question. There were some things that we were supposed to get in place to start doing. Are we concerned about, I mean, this is just the update on the actual document, but some of the things that we refined on are, do we have those in process that we're actually starting to do those things?
This would be a question I would ordinarily defer to Sean, but I do understand that he has been working, along with Curly, on all of the sort of secondary documents that the MPCA is requiring, and secondary policies and practices. Meaning, this ordinance is the actual regulation, the actual control mechanism that the city will be adopting. There's a lot of stuff that goes to actual implementation of that ordinance, and I believe Sean has been working on that. I know that they've submitted updates to policies to the MPCA. So I I would, I guess, say that that will be an update I will talk to Sean about, and between the two of us, we'll provide that to the city council at the next meeting as well.
I will continue on here. Looking at the timeframe, are you back? Are we ready to adjourn? All right.
Ready to adjourn if that's the last item. So we're adjourned.
What's in the first one, or what's in the second one? Yeah.